Started like we're making every one of it. Town board meeting, uh, uh, the town, uh, asked that anybody addressing that's on the agenda, try to limit it to five minutes if possible. And, uh, maybe me is called the order as of now, it's, uh, four minutes after. One, one and four. Uh, have Mandy trade and approve.
It's gonna have to wait. Wait on Jackie.
Oh, business.
We're gonna LV and party?
Oh, we can put that, uh, dream it between county and town on that second seating station. Just add that on new bill and take care of that.
Okay.
Just go ahead and do it. I guess this is, this is really old and new. It's a new report. Uh, we received, Bobby received a letter from the United States Environmental Protection Agency. His achievement of area-wide optimism program performance goes for two thousand and twelve. Congratulations on the meeting goals set by the North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources for optimized drinking water treatment plan performance. For your business during two thousand and twelve, we at U.S. Environmental Protection Agency are proud of your accomplishments. It represents protection against waste-borne disease that extend beyond our regulatory standards and it emphasizes a commitment of excellence. That is a cornerstone of the area-wide optimism program, that's the AWP. Uh, last year, we was, uh, I let, we was in amongst Wayne's Will and all, I mean, ours was just right there. And all, and, uh, we had one little, uh, back set whenever the dumping occurred, uh, out here. But still, yeah, even that, we're still in the, right up there with the big boys. And, uh, um, that's something to be proud of because I remember years ago, we, we couldn't have passed nothing.
I just had to hit that from, we, we, we've got that degree for the last three years.
Right.
Three years rowing and running and going for water plant operators and the job that they do. Barry Wiggins, our OOC, Mike Blair.
Mm-hmm.
We could achieve that right there. We just, we just remember the operators.
And the town, they were having, they were, they were working double shifts or whatever.
Whatever they had.
Nine and eight. Okay. Uh.
Go to Teresa, she wants to get her.
Teresa, uh, when you go ahead and go. Okay, Teresa?
I don't have anything to vote on, I think that is, it was informational. Wanna get a good pamphlet about him?
Right.
The next thing, the self-discovery thing, I'm hoping it will get kids involved, teenagers involved, that's really the focus, this is the focus of this. I'm gonna try to get the kids, uh, involved in it and families too, that is that. Second thing is, I've taken a ten, I made an attempt at writing a job description for this job since there, I didn't.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't necessarily see one year, but probably wasn't that. So I kinda wrote down kind of a list of things, um, probably some of them can be combined, but it's a start. So it's basically to get you to like, I just look at and see if there's anything additions or, or combinations or revisions or whatever.
Right.
That we need to do, um, cause I think some of the things might change once Mandy does her part too.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I know what this position is today, um, or the position of the tourism director, whatever it's gonna be called. Uh, so that was just for you to look over and review and discuss at some time. And then, uh, the thing I really want to talk about is, um, I talked to, um, Fontana, Segawa, Tabitha at Travel and Tourism and, uh, Angie Knott at the school. And a couple of other people. And we're gonna meet on December seventeenth to come up with a yearly, a year community calendar. So we don't plan on top of each other, hopefully, or we can figure out how we're gonna work together or whatever. So before December seventeenth, I kinda need to get my calendar for the year in place. Okay, so if we're gonna change the dates on anything, we need to at least think about it now, you know? So when I go to that meeting, we kinda have an idea.
Uh, is there, is there any way that we can, can, or who do we contact? And I know it's just in its work of, uh, beginning work phase about getting like, uh, snowbird or Indians like involved in like the parade or whatever. Is that a no or is our latest, uh?
Well, my intent is we are, we have discussed, um, which everything is not in place. But we've discussed bringing TJ onto one of the committees so that he can be our liaison. And I already worked with TJ on a little bit on the wreath laying and on the storytelling festival. And loosely on fading voice, I don't wanna do anything.
Fading voice.
Market a little bit for them on fading voices, but they don't want it marketed.
I, I won't.
They don't want fading voices marketed very much, just low.
Right.
Not, not out into the public.
Right.
Um, so I work with him and that's how I've been doing it. Now, if there's somebody else that we need to get to, I'd be happy to. And I work pretty close with Lynn and Bill.
And Billy, yeah.
Yeah, uh, they've been great since I came on, they have helped me immeasurably, um. But I think it's always something we need to be working on, you know, it's hard sometimes to, to participate.
Oh, you do good, Teresa.
Yeah, you're doing a wonderful job and, and it's, you don't know how much, how much people has bragged on what went on down there.
Really?
Yeah, and, uh, the, the tree down there, this one here was totally out this morning we came in, but we had so many power surges last night in town.
Yeah.
It shut the.
Yeah, just the.
Had to, had to reset the.
Oh, wow, shut the tree?
No, yeah, well, it had to reset whenever it surges.
Yeah.
It, it kicks that little old safety thing.
The, the guys were great too, the maintenance crew was unbelievable and, you know, you can't, you couldn't do this job without, without me. I mean, it ain't straight. And you guys are real helpful too.
Well, thank you, Teresa.
So it's sort of like a team effort and Mandy, she picks up every draw, by all draws, so.
You do good. It's just our second year. Yes, it's our second year.
For two good years, when you go from nothing to something, I mean, it's gotta start. I think you gotta get started on it.
Oh, gosh, yes.
You've got two hundred kids, we'll do a fishing derby next week. Do one every month.
Oh, wow.
And then you got this thing, I mean, we've got a base and so do we wanna build more? Do we wanna just do, not worry about building things and which events do we wanna build? You know, it's kind of a hard, the committee, when the tourism committee comes out, I'm sure they'll have.
More ideas.
More ideas, but, but I kinda need kind of a tentative skeleton that you, you know.
Right.
Outline before this happens.
And it needs to be like at least.
It'd be next week.
Be nice, uh, two months.
I want a year.
Yeah, but I mean.
But it's gotta be, it has to be next year, it has to be next week.
I know, but it'd be nice to have like, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Like I will buy stuff for next December after Christmas.
After Christmas, yeah, right.
I, I, I mean, you know, you have to have some long range.
Yeah.
Mandy and I have already talked about the thing for next year and what it's gonna be maybe, you know, so, yeah, everything's how you. But once you know.
We've got it for the next three years.
Once you know, it's.
That's what it should be, I mean, that's what it should be.
But it's easier to, you know, cause you know what you're looking out for, that's it. But, uh, so, anyway, so that's the plan and Jan has agreed to go with me to that meeting on the seventeenth, so, um. And I gave you out sort of the tentative list at the, so, um. Now's the time to speak, uh, Bobby, the fishing derby.
Right.
I talked to Lauren last night and she thought they were gonna have the fishing derby at Rattle Ford. And I told Lauren last night, I said, the town was to have it, if we helped, they hadn't had it, and it's fine, we'll work together, the town was to have it in the city.
Well, yeah, yeah.
You tell me.
Well.
Or you guys tell me, I mean.
Really, for the number of kids we had, you know, we, we did four times what went out there.
Come on.
So far, for, some of them can't go.
Right.
And the walk-ins we had from town, but.
Yeah.
I mean, just the kids that walked up and it's close enough, I think we would have it here and, and.
Okay, I do, yeah.
As far as, you know, the exit, like, I hope they set a booth up or.
Well, and so I think, uh, and that's what I wanted to confirm with y'all, like, we want it here, so we have to have our own fine.
Yeah.
And if we'll do it at a time when it's not gonna complete with the four services. But if, but that's something we want to, okay, just wanted to clarify, make sure, before I talked to Gina again.
Yeah, we just had two, two good success out there.
Oh, wow.
The number of kids.
Even the little bitty ones.
Yeah.
They were precious.
It was fun.
I know.
It was, except Bobby had the hardest time, so.
Oh, God.
Okay, so this is the tentative schedule of stuff that's happening. Okay, some of it I'm doing, some of it, the training workshop is where we went this year. Anna, that's just sort of. And the school wants to do back to school part, school parties in August, collaborate on that, so we need to think about if we wanna do that or not.
I understand why not, that'd be good, but you said that. Well, there is liability.
The county would have some of that too, cause it's gone county, probably more than wayward.
Well, because it's county, not toward our bank at, at their, uh, what's his name? I need the recreation director.
Jason.
Jason, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I know, it's, these are just things we gotta, that, when we meet after the seventeenth, everybody'll start, sort of start. And I need to invite Jason to that meeting, cause I haven't.
Mm-hmm.
And I need somebody from the town of Santitla that I don't really know who even, they don't do anything that I know of, but.
What about the? What's your guy's name?
Want you?
Can't call him six staff, but you can just why.
Oh, I don't know who you're talking, you're talking about, um, you used to have a restaurant down there.
Aura and Griffith, Aura and Arthur.
Griffin, Griffin.
There you go, what's his name?
Aura and Arthur Griffith.
Arthur, Arthur.
Is, 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 is he helping?
I think he might, yeah, I think he does, yeah, I think he does.
Father and his wife is real good, they, they like to get into community.
They do, they're working.
And they'd be good, she, she loves it, she.
Well, I'd like to do something at the lake, we just hadn't figured out quite what yet.
So, okay. So is this, I hate to tell you, look it over and then when you guys, if you come up with something or an idea or decide, let me know and we'll revise this event.
Okay.
And then on the seventeenth, we'll go. The real question, the only real question I have is about Taste of the Wild, which I want to make a, you know, that was my first year to get, to figure out the food, but I want to make it like a survivalist event. So now that I got the food figured out, I wanna make it that.
The wild.
Yeah.
Maybe tie in our duck race, didn't we discuss that too? Tie in our duck race with the.
We get that duck with the, with the, they all got together.
Yeah, have something else to do, okay, all right, any questions for me and I'm done?
We've got something to discuss with her and. Close session also. Uh, but let me, before we do something like that right there, uh, uh, we need to discuss, uh, this about, uh, Ron Joe Phillips' water bill. I think that was the last meeting or something, he was tabled. Uh. Adjustments on billing from six twenty-six through nine twenty-six due to meter being bad and they've got a quotation mark here says, and on ten-two, uh, per the board, table issued, same water billing after new meter installed. Uh, Sherri.
She said, she said that, um, up here is down the play up, you know, it's counting about the sign.
About the sign, it's like.
We'll get the track, you know, when the foot flush, uh, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
And this.
I've been going wrong, Joe's used all of his, uh, elite credits.
And he.
I don't know. He missing, no. No.
And he had one or already?
It looks like he had, he must've had something up here on eight twenty-seven or twelve, see where that credit is? See where his bill was X amount of money and then he go, and his payment was just say that amount, then he has a credit. So that's been on that high bill back in June of twelve. So it doesn't look like this calendar year, it has not.
Hmm.
Well, he gets late credit though. I mean, that's those of him, he wanted to use his late credit, that. Yeah, I mean, it's.
I just, I don't. But there wasn't a meter fitting on five twenty-one.
On five twenty-one?
Yeah, that's what she's got, five twenty in term, new meter installed. But even after the new meter was installed.
Yeah. Used, uh, from seventeen-four to thirty-eight, ninety.
And didn't really make a difference.
The water's going through there somewhere, it's like.
Well, wait a minute, there's on nine nineteen, that Chase check meter. So it looks like on nine nineteen, there's another need, different meter fitting.
A little different from nine ten, but when you fill weather.
It's about nine thousand again, nine thousand. I don't know, it looks to me like it, I mean, he's got a, a late added, if he wants to do it, or he states, I, I don't have no lead, but I want to use my late added.
So where do you have it?
He's a dancer.
And just duly mark it in the later book or in the minutes, uh, if needed. Okay, then, um, Mandy, you learn right to money? So today's here, just brave them.
You want any water?
I have, uh, want some water now?
Are they?
I have Jackie, nice little bit of minutes.
Yeah.
Oh, Bobby's ready?
No.
No, uh.
They're looking for a dog somewhere.
Dog game.
No.
Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, bring up, uh, our Christmas holiday. Uh, we looked it up in the, the minutes and, uh, if, if it lands on a from a Tuesday to.
Thursday.
A Thursday, you get three days.
Right. You get Christmas Eve, Christmas Day and then day after.
Day after, uh, the only thing that Bobby, me and Bobby was in there, Bobby said, the only thing you do on, the main thing they do on Fridays, pick up garbage, uh.
We'll have to run on Friday.
Have to run on Friday, have to, have to pick that garbage up on Friday because, uh, it's.
It'll be, after Christmas, it'll be awful.
Uh. How do you, how do you just want to do that, officer?
Just garbage pick up.
What day was it on, this Christmas?
Twenty-four.
Christmas is on a Wednesday, so they get, they get Tuesday off.
Yeah.
Wednesday and, uh.
They get twenty-four, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
And come back on twenty-seventh.
On Friday.
On Friday.
Okay. There it is. Uh, we need to go into executive session to discuss that occupancy.
That's not the one that.
Does that type one?
No, the other, it's the personnel.
Personnel, thanks. Uh, yeah, that's okay.
Occupancy now.
Mandy, uh, on as many as matters, like, I mean, just, just the top of. Only, only time to correct.
You can.
Let me just circle it. Has, did Jan made a motion to delete, and then Jackie, so Jan seconded? One of us, you put, you put Jan down two times to the left.
Evidently, I got Jan happy.
Jan did it.
Yes.
Look, make them stop.
You made that motion though, I guess.
I don't know, I made, I made a motion?
Yeah, you made a motion, but you really is, you've got it in your good card, don't you? All right, what's next? Somebody to initial on top of me.
Of the occupancy.
Bobby, initial. Um, I can get a little thing, if you wanna go ahead, if you either wanna handle the other or you wanna handle all my little note of everything that we gotta do. Let's get through everything before we get to the.
Before, yeah.
Signature cards, if you wanna do the occupancy tax, sir?
Go ahead.
Okay, on the occupancy tax, I need authorization, y'all to authorize, authorize me to set up the new account for the travel, for period, whatever y'all are gonna call it. That's the first thing.
Well, let me ask that, not the occupancy? No. The town board sets that. We set that.
All of this is, all of this is gonna be town, then this is not, nothing to do with the board, yeah. But the first, one thing, this is the first you gotta do is authorize me to set up account, say who you want on the, uh, authorization for the camp. Authorize me to do federal, get a federal ID number, I've gotta set the rate, you've gotta adopt the rate, you've gotta adopt sales tax. I meant like the penalty, if you wanna follow like this partner revenue.
Right.
Uh, like penalty base, which most do. Uh, you gotta appoint fin, appoint a finance officer, uh, approve the contract for Becky to do it. And approve if y'all are gonna follow the procedures of the town policy. And set a budget.
And then the, the personnel part falls under the town policy? I don't think that should be, they just, will they be like a town employee?
That's what we gotta discuss, we gotta discuss that into a.
Well, being on the board, but that.
But it'd be up to the board, they have to, she has to report to the board, don't she?
Yeah. Yeah, but that's something we have to discuss and.
What man, we would have said that was, surely, but you'd have to get the holiday, is that, is this, is it gonna be a full-time job or a part-time?
That's something.
Well, that's, board will have to set that one too.
The, the other board, not you.
Yeah, right. I think it'd be a part-time start.
That obviously, that, is that, is that that one that just comes in quarterly, that it's mailed in?
Yep, yep.
Just quarterly?
Well, that's one of them.
Oh, that, that wouldn't really throw your financial officer in as a full, the full time, would it?
No, it's, I'll have to appoint.
I mean, you'd have to have.
You can't point nobody up but the card.
Word, I know, I mean, that's.
It's just gotta be an official.
As this is another subtitle from your already hat that you've already got wearing.
It's called something, I don't know what it was, I don't, it's called a something, but I don't know what all it is.
I'll make a motion, we authorize Mandy to set up a bank account for Town Robinville Travel and Tourism.
Say.
You names? And we keep doing, uh, uh, all this under one motion, but I make a motion, we, uh.
Let's sort it, yeah.
I guess we could authorize Mandy to set up federal ID number for the Town Robinville Travel and Tourism.
Say.
But.
Under the same motion, set the tax rate at three percent, adopt the tax rate at three percent.
If y'all want it three percent.
Well, I thought it was only set.
It's down to.
Up two, y'all had to.
We want a map, yeah, we pull the map down.
That's exactly.
Uh, penalty construction for the North Carolina Partner Revenue under the same motion.
A motion that you wanna follow like the penalties of the, yes?
Yes.
Is that the policy structure you want to follow?
Mm-hmm. You names?
Vote.
I've got you on the sales tax with the no interest, I mean, like the ones that sales tax.
You can't, you just can't charge interest.
Keep charging any interest.
Follow their penalties.
Follow their penalties, okay, I got you on that. Uh, I would make the motion that we appoint Mandy Fescue Sharp as financial officer for Town Robinville.
Say.
Vote.
You names? Hmm, and then we also follow the, under the same motion, follow town personnel policy.
Well, that's, that's where it starts, I would have to start explaining.
Right. Before you start explaining, uh, I make a motion for the, uh, monthly contract, uh, for the collection of occupancy tax to be in my Becky Gar.
She does the technical calculus, don't she?
We gotta have somebody do it. Yes, she could assure that, I'll second that motion.
You names? Okay, that's all I need on that for now.
And I will, uh. Hold it, hold on, I travel, I have a question, this job description we got, is that?
It's Teresa's.
That's gonna be, uh.
That's gonna be a baseline.
That position is the baseline for what we're looking for.
It's a big baseline.
Yeah, she's a woman.
And it's gonna be part-time job? Yeah. That's gonna be, woo, to be determined how it flies.
Yeah, yeah.
That occupancy stuff and all this and all this? My gosh, I don't say it's gonna be part-time, but I think that's what we're gonna start it, wasn't we? The board's gonna start it. I'm sure, I mean, that, that's just something to have to look at. And on these events, all these is what we're gonna do, and these are just maybe ideas of what we're gonna do.
Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna do them all, yeah.
Gonna do them all and then try to.
Other ideals down at bottom, that's.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we know try to tie that, uh, like the taste, Taste of the Wild in with our duck race and that way it'll generate more.
The seventeenth we're gonna make, so we'll have a, an idea more of what we can do. The seventeenth we're gonna make, so we'll have a, an idea more of what we're gonna do.
She's already, she, she's already planning on, like, uh, after Christmas, she's gonna be buying stuff for July and August.
Next year.
Then, then, oh, oh, y'all gotta set a budget, but.
To entertain a motion for us to go on your close section and set a statute.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion to go into, uh, close section, uh, one forty-three dash three eighteen A six and Gina's statutes and we'll come out.
I'll make a motion.
Take it.